Good evening and welcome to the April 1st, 2019 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. We are not kidding, we are live. So if you could please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will go on to item number three, which is the legislative update. And we have in our midst Rosemarie Rung, our state representative. And welcome and thank you for coming.
How's that? Okay, great. Thank you very much for adding this to the agenda. I think it's great. I really appreciate it. And I hope that it proves useful to the board to get these updates. I think I was here last time in January or February. And I presented you all the bills at that time that had been assigned to the Education Committee. I did delete bills that really weren't appropriate, but it wasn't relevant to K through 12. Like there were some higher learning bills in cooperative school districts. I didn't include those. But what I've done is I've taken that list and added other bills that had been assigned to the Education Committee and also the Senate bills, because we're in what's called the changeover in the House. And our bills that we voted on are now going to the Senate and Senate bills are coming to the House. So we're starting to hear those Senate bills. So I've included those two. So you can see we've got eight pages of bills here. And this is just Education Committee. So I'm not going to go through every one, but I'm going to go through some of the major ones. And then if you have any questions about any other ones, feel free to ask. The first one that I thought was interesting was House Bill 123. That pertains to schools emergency response plan. And one of the things that has been amended to this bill that wasn't in existence when I first presented it to you was that the amendment allows school districts to make the decision whether those drills should be a discussion only. I think there was some concern in committee and public hearings that some districts may have a concern about doing a live assailant drill, you know, an actual assailant drill. So that can be done as a discussion. And that did pass the House with that amendment. And it's now on to the Senate, which also recommends it to pass. So it'll probably go before the governor. And then I wanted to get, on the second page, I wanted to go over some of these finance bills. There are many bills that have been submitted and have passed the House relating to adequacy funding, the stabilization grants. And you'll see that some of those bills, and I'm specifically talking about HB 176, 177, and 184. Those bills are being retained in the Finance Committee. And what that allows the House to do is if they, if there's an issue getting the budget passed, the budget that comes from the General Court in the House, that those can be resubmitted in January. So bills that are retained have the option of staying in the committee and then being brought forward again in January. Because since the House and the Senate operate on a biennium, if we were to retain those bills now, they would die. Because we don't have the opportunity to bring them forth before the next House and Senate get elected. So they can be retained in the first year, but in the second year, they just go off to, you know, a very quiet death on some table someplace. But those have been retained. And the reason, the reason those bills are very important is that there's a priority among, in the House and the General Court with the majority party, that we want to bring property tax relief while increasing the funding that we bring to local school districts. So I think I probably prematurely sent you some numbers about a month ago about what that was going to look like for next year. But I have the final numbers. I got them today from the Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee that handles education. And if, if all goes well, if all these things get passed, they're still in the sausage making factory. But if they get passed, Merrimack will look forward to $266,628 for the fiscal year 20 to 21. And then the following year, it would be $287,880. And I know those aren't a big percentage of, they're a very small percentage of the overall budget for the Merrimack School District. But they'll, it's based on the percentage of students that are on free and reduced lunch. And the, the goal of the, the House and the Senate is to bring immediately relief next year to those districts that are really suffering, that they have a very high number of students with free and reduced lunch. And we've heard some really sad stories in Concord. And especially if you look at towns up north like Berland, they had to close a school because of just the disparity in the revenue that they were getting. They could not support that school out of property tax. So that's bringing some immediate relief. And then long term, the House passed, it's still in the Senate, of implementing a capital gains tax where that revenue, which is predicted to be 150 million, 100% of that would go to the Education Trust Fund. So that will bring in more relief with a change in the adequacy formula. So besides the targeted aid, which will kick in next year if everything passes, there's a longer term goal of bringing more state money to Merrimack. And in the capital gains tax, it's very in line with the taxes New Hampshire already assesses for dividends and interest. There's a very, we increased, over doubled the exemptions and included an exemption for people 65 and older who may use capital gains as income. So it's really going after higher income people where they get a lot of their income from capital gains and using that money to offset local property taxes. So people that are paying, local property tax would pay less of that. But if they make more than, oh, I forget the number, I should have brought it, if capital gains, they would be taxed on that. So any questions? Okay. So that's, the finance is the big, big focus right now in the Education Committee. And it's now in the Finance Committee. And then Dr. Schoenfield, that conversation we had after the last time we met, it actually changed my position on House Bill 226. And that did pass. It's awaiting a Senate vote regarding reducing from five to three the consecutive years of teaching required for teachers to be entitled to notification and adhering to where the teacher is reappointed. And then there's just, there's House Bill 329, which is awaiting a Senate vote. That's to review and adopt a data security plan, but allowing that to remain in non-public. Just because it's a good idea that security strategies and plans are kept, kept private. And then we did pass House Bill 383. I expect that to pass the Senate, which extends the state law against discrimination to any non-public school that receives public funds. There was a very contentious bill that had a lot of discussion on the House floor that prohibits carrying a firearm in a safe school zone. We've established that. One component of that bill that may be of interest to you is it does allow the school board the right to allow people at their, with their permission to carry a gun in a school. So if there's someone that approaches the school board and says, "I would like permission to carry my firearm in a school zone," it leaves that control and permission up to the local school board to do that. And then, and then I'll just point out too, when I was talking about that, the targeted aid, that really, a lot of those, the features of that come under House Bill 709, which is in-house finance. And then the Senate bills, which we didn't talk about last time. There's one about the application in education and certification requirements for school nurses. There's another bill on the same topic where it did pass the House, where we've passed a bill to set up a position with, at the State Department of Education for a nurse coordinator. And this person would be a subject matter expert, a nurse, professional nurse with lots of experience that would serve as a mentor or support for local school nurses. So if there's a school nurse, let's say at Thornton's Ferry, who has a very medically involved student, and the nurse is not sure how to maybe perform a procedure or look out for certain symptoms or how to respond for certain issues, nurse can call the school coordinator and get it. So it's a, whoops. It's a way of providing school nurses throughout the state with a nurse expert to rely on, since those types of people don't exist in a district. If one of our nurses had, needed some professional guidance on how to respond to a student, he or she may not be, doesn't have that resource in the school district, but they would be able to access this position at the state. Apparently, the state used to have this position many years ago, but it got cut. So we're reinstating it, you know, as long as it gets signed. And then there's, you know, there's some other bills. You'll notice that the ones that are being heard this week, I did note Wednesday's a big hearing day for this, for the House Education Committee where we're hearing these Senate bills. So if you want me to go in and testify or at least provide written, a written position, which I can do on where we stand, I would more than welcome to have that guidance if any of these seem like they're important to you. And other than that, I can just let you review these at your, at your leisure. If there's other Senate bills that aren't scheduled yet for public hearing, please let me know if you want me to take a position on those and I'll watch the calendar.
Thank you. And I will tell you, Rosemarie, HB 131 is the third one down in what you've presented. And this bill establishes a commission on mental health education programs. And we're going to be learning a lot about that tonight. So I don't know if you have a few minutes extra, but you'll get a lot of great information tonight.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely going to stay. I'm even hoping maybe the social and emotional learning curriculum can be extended to, you know, the full New Hampshire House. We might be able to use that too.
There you go.
Some of us, I won't name names.
We have some experts in our ranks.
Okay. Okay. And again, you know, feel free to call me or let me know.
Absolutely. And you have a question or comment?
So yeah, thanks, Rosemarie. When you originally sent out, so this is on the stabilization grants.
Yes.
You sent that initial table out. The number you told for Merrimack's, a little bit higher, I think, than it was originally. It's in the same scope and scale. You talk about the different, the bills talk about the different ways they allocate the money based on the towns. I don't expect you to know the answer here, but one of the things that's very glaring to me is we compare ourselves to Bedford all the time, you know, in terms of similar. You know, they have a few more students, the budgets are fairly similar, the demographics aren't that far off. Merrimack's going to receive $287,000 of stabilization grants. What you sent me, and if it's still in the same, Bedford gets $2 million in stabilization grants for the coming year. So to a layperson looking at those numbers in terms of that, you wonder why.
Yeah, I'll get the answer for you. I think the stabilization grants and the targeted aid are a little bit different. There's a different formula there. But I know the numbers that I gave you tonight, they just came out today. And so, but I'm going to, I'll find out the answer to that and I'll send it to you.
Because it just seemed, I mean, if it was a couple hundred thousand more, I'd say, but that's like 10 times the amount, so.
No, thank you, thank you for that.
Excellent. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And we're on to item number four, which is the proposed social and emotional learning curriculum for grades K through 12, five. And I welcome to the table the committee. And I will allow John and Julie to introduce those who are participating. So thank you and welcome.
That was a nice picture of my family, by the way. So thank you for the opportunity tonight. This is very exciting for us as a committee. We have done a lot of work over a long time to sit here tonight and talk about social emotional curriculum and social emotional learning. So before I begin, I'm going to turn all the way to my right to Mr. Sawyer and let him introduce himself and let our committee members introduce themselves tonight.
Bill Sawyer, fifth grade teacher at the upper elementary.
Melissa Moyer, school counselor at the upper elementary.
Allison McGuire, third grade teacher at Reed's Ferry School.
Kathleen Hoppa, school counselor.
Julie DeLuca, Assistant Principal at Thornton's Ferry.
And John Fabrizio, Director of Student Services. So we're here tonight to talk about, well, before I begin, I'm going to talk about kind of who's not here tonight in our full committee. I want to start here. So at MES, we had Holly LaBelzak, Sarah Championy, Jamie Codero. At Thornton's Ferry, Kim Kelleher, Amy Deese, Cara Daly, Paula Corelli, and Chris Rowe. At Reed's Ferry, Kelly Chapetta, Sarah Claire, Allison McGuire, and Kim Ross. And at J Muse, or James Mastecola Upper Elementary School, Claire Mitchell, Louis Mayu, and Bill Sawyer. Committee facilitators were Melissa Moyer, Fern Sidon, Kathy Hoppa, and Cassie Early. So as I begin, I want to talk about our purpose tonight and why we're here. We're here because of the findings of our Mental Health Committee had a subcommittee. And it was to look at social emotional learning. And tonight, we're here to talk about our findings and the program we've chose. So a little history before we begin. About 2015, we came to the school board and we wrote a white paper. And we talked about a problem we were having. And we talked about our school and our youngest learners and some of the behaviors we were seeing and some of the issues we were seeing with our students in the classroom. And we're here tonight, after providing you with that white paper, to go a little further and talk about how we've continued throughout the course of these years, these four years, really developing our system of care. And how we've done that not only in our community, in our schools, with each other. We're continuing to grow. We're continuing to professionally develop. We're continuing to connect to our families and to our community. And we did that, we came up and we said, we really have to look at really, what kind of learning can we do in our classroom? In our tier one? And we've brought that forward. And as we're here tonight to talk about some social emotional learning, I want to take us back a little bit to our first data collection. We came before you and we said, we collected some data. And we looked at it and we said, we're spending 80% of our time with 20% of our students. And we thought about that. And we thought long and hard as a committee. And we said, how can we look at this in a different way? How can we be proactive about this issue versus reactive? What needs to change for us? So we looked at our tier one instruction. It's just like reading. It's just like writing. It's just like math. You need to teach it. We don't have assumptions that students come to our school knowing how to read. We break it down. We do it slowly. We break it to the littlest part of a phoneme and a little bit of part of a word. And we say, how can we build this back up so students are fluent? Well, social emotional learning's a little of the same. We need to break it down. Need to look at the skills. Need to look at, how do we get along with each other? How do we react to each other? What are our executive functioning skills? And how do we build this? So as you will see as we present tonight, we looked at programming and how to choose a program similar to other programs we've chose in tier one. So in the summer of 2017, we reviewed CASL and the research-based curriculums. In the fall of 2017, we compared the Merrimack District's social emotional curriculum. And we said, what are we going to do? What criteria do we need for this curriculum, for this program? What are our needs? Then the winter, after much research, we selected two programs. And we evaluate, we began our evaluation in the spring of 2018. We completed our evaluation this past November. And in the winter, we collected and analyzed more data. So here we are in April of 2019. And we sit before you tonight to talk about what our choice was, why we chose it, and a little more learning around social emotional curriculums. So with our hope, if we pass our budget next Tuesday, a little ploy, that we will have a full implementation from K to five of a social emotional curriculum in our Merrimack schools. Julie?
Thank you, John. Really nice recap of our history. Let's go back to the beginning. And sometimes we've been at this work with all of you for years now. And it's good sometimes to step away and say, wait a minute. Not everybody knows what social and emotional learning is. And sometimes when you're in that bubble, you forget about that. So it's really helpful as part of this process that we went and spoke with different committees to help us and say, wait a minute, you have to define that for us. Not everybody knows that. So we want to go back to, tonight, we're recommending a program that's a component of what social and emotional learning means. And it's as defined by CASL, which is a collaborative for academic and social emotional learning, is a process through which children and adults understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy, which is foundational to the program that you will hear about tonight, establish and maintain positive relationships and make responsible decisions. And just like our representative said, adults as well. So what we model for our kids is very important as well in our schools. So tonight, we're recommending a program, but there's more that we do around social and emotional learning. You've seen this slide before. And this is the CASL, the Competencies Identified for Social Emotional Learning. And CASL is a leading clearinghouse for research, policy, and program. It is the gold standard for social emotional learning competencies. And I believe you have that handout in front of you. And you can see on that handout that there are five areas of competencies of self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. We've presented this before, but it's always important to talk about this. We are a school. And everything we do is purposeful and tied to academics and to learning. And we want to go back to an important part of research that really grounds this work. And that is a study that was done with 270,000 students around the effectiveness of programming that promotes students' academic, social, and emotional learning. It was a meta-analysis of 213 studies that, again, for 270,000 students, that showed on average, educational programs designed to promote social and emotional learning were capable of producing 11 percentile point gains in academic achievement. And later you'll hear about our job is to provide the optimal learning conditions and to promote the optimal learning environment for kids. And there's already studies showing that there could be a potential 11% gain for academics. Again, as we went through this process and spoke to a number of people, it really helped us frame the message about what SEL is and what SEL is not. Dr. McLaughlin and I have spent a lot of time with this and provided a lot of guidance in really helping us define this to our families and our community. And as you all know, this is a component, it's not everything, in social emotional learning. It is a system of care. It is about a partnership in conversations with families. One of the most, we've been teaching this for some time at Thornton's Ferry as a pilot, but one of the most important feedbacks we get from families is that they're able to use common language in their homes and consistent language. And the children will go home and say, Mom, remember to take your deep breaths or to use this language. So this has been really important. We've gotten excellent feedback from families around this common language that we're able to reinforce at school and have conversations with our families. It's competency-based, just like we hear with academics, integrated with academics. And you'll hear from the teachers this evening about how they've been able to integrate this with other academic content areas. We've already talked about college and career readiness. Just as important is to talk about what it is, it is not mental health treatment. There is this misperception, and I know because it's a growing field. And I understand that we're not treating students for mental health. We are not screening students for mental health disorders. This is a skill-based program, skills that are connected to the career and college readiness. This is not character education. This is not about teaching the values of honesty and integrity or what we may consider the important values for a family system. This is about conversation with families around skills and common language. This is not parenting at school. This is about having conversations with kids about how do you cooperate? How do you problem solve? How do you work as a team? Many of the same skills that we all need in our work environment. So that is really what it's about.
So when our, when our subcommittee first met back in the summer of 2016, even before John's timeline, I noticed, we created this statement of purpose to help guard our work. And it says that social emotional learning provides the foundation for cognitive growth, academic success, and emotional resiliency. We are committed to delivering social emotional competencies within a comprehensive, multi-tiered system that will create optimal conditions for learning for every student. So in the first sentence, we use the foundation, use the word foundation because we know that this learning will be proactive and delivered to all students in the form of tier one classroom instruction. We also know that social emotional learning is only a part of the multi-tiered system of care and learning supports. That is the committee's overall mission. And we'll talk more about this idea in the next slide. So here we try to conceptualize all the components that work together to create the optimal learning conditions and outcomes for all students. At the top, you can see that we stress the importance of family and community partnerships. As educators, we must work to build productive relationships with parents and families and the community at large, so we can address the needs of all of our students. Then on the left, we know that we have skilled counselors in each of our buildings who are trained to deliver social, emotional, academic, and career instruction to students in both tiers two and one. In our district, all of the elementary counselors visit classrooms and deliver various social emotional themed lessons based on the needs of our building. And this will continue. District counselors also continue to offer tier two small groups for more targeted instruction on topics such as anxiety, executive functioning, problem-solving, grief, or friendship skills. Third, on the right, we propose that we incorporate the universal explicit social emotional program taught by classroom teachers that we were discussing today. In the future, this will provide the common language upon which all District K 12, K 5, excuse me, students build upon as they grow through Merrimack. And finally, each school in our district has its own unique community and culture, which is buoyed by a school-wide climate initiative such as PIBIS or Responsive Classroom. And all of the climate initiatives or behavior support programs, behavior support programs work in tandem with SEL programs. All of these components together represent the SEL curriculum. All of these components together represent the SEL curriculum that we envision. So when we began looking at programs, we wanted to make sure that the programs that we were going to evaluate shared this Tier One criteria so that they were safe, sequenced, active, focused, and explicit. And that came from Castle. That they had a clear scope and sequence, that they were taught with fidelity by the classroom teachers, that they aligned with Castle core competencies. We wanted to make sure that they had a minimum of 18 to 20 lessons. They needed to be evidence-based and have evaluative tools. We wanted to make sure that there was teacher professional development, but that it was also easy to use. Multiple modalities, really structured lesson plans. Really important, like we've said, is that the parent-family component. We wanted to make sure they were developmentally appropriate, cultural sensitivity, integrated with the school climate and culture, and also had a reasonable budget. So on the column on the left, you can see all of the six programs that the subcommittee reviewed to begin the process two years ago. Across the top of the row, you see the criteria that Melissa just discussed. All six of the programs are research-based and were vetted by Castle before we even looked at them. As we reviewed the criteria, two programs quickly rose to the top. Second Step and PATHS. Of course, some in our district were already familiar with Second Step. But using this rubric, we also recognized that this program specifically met all of our indicators quite well. The local success and the high marks for Second Step made it an easy first choice to evaluate. PATHS also scored high marks on all of the indicators. So the subcommittee selected that program to evaluate as well. And you can see the slide continues to the next slide where the top indicators continue to include the developmental appropriateness, cultural sensitivity, sustainability, and cost. And I believe there are only two programs up there. PATHS and Second Step have all of the X's. So all the indicators are met. Back and forth. As John mentioned previously, when beginning the evaluation, we looked at other Tier One programs that had been evaluated in the past. And we actually ended up utilizing the same rubric format as the math programs that were evaluated, I believe, last year and the year before. And we tweaked them a little bit to make it, you know, for social emotional learning. But we used the same rubric components, which were competencies, differentiation, assessments and evaluation, the learner, student and teacher resources, technology, professional development, homeschool connection, as well as learner outcomes. And these were the four. During the evaluation, we met back in January. We got all the teachers together and we talked about Second Step and we talked about PATHS. And we had the teachers do this activity where they had little dots and they went up to all the rubrics and they put the dots next to the ones that they thought were most important. They each had three dots. And these were the top four for the teachers, which was the curriculum standards, student and teacher resources, the learner, and the homeschool communication. And when we were looking at the two rubrics between Second Step and PATHS, these were the four that, well, four of the other ones. But these were the top four that Second Step outscored PATHS as well. So we felt that that was really important, that they aligned with the four main components that the teachers thought were really important.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about Second Step as the program that we endorsed that day and that the teachers agreed upon. We wanted to just share with you that these are the five areas that are part of the units of study that all K through five students will participate in and have participated in, those in the pilot. They are explicitly taught and there are components and competencies that are explicitly taught and then integrated into learning opportunities throughout the day. As mentioned before, the program meets the criteria of being safe, sequenced, active, focused, and explicit. The skills build upon one another in a scope and sequence. And the content really lends itself to being integrated across the curriculum. And I know the teachers may be talking about examples of that tonight. The information that students are learning is shared with parents through Letters Home so that should a family choose to do so, they can reinforce skills, helping to generalize the skills beyond the classroom. And so just as an example of what it might look like in the classroom, these units of study, within the unit of empathy, students learn about perspective shifting. They learn about how to read body language, nonverbal skills, and really understanding what a caring approach to respecting someone else looks like. They understand the importance of diversity and respecting differences. In the area of skills for learning, children are taught, for instance, to look at what you're paying attention to and to filter out distractions. So each of these units of study is very rich in the content and what is offered to students.
So our next steps to begin talking about this with all of our teachers in the level of K to five, we would hope to schedule some professional development to help our teachers really truly understand what they are implementing in their classroom and what that would look like for them and also for their families as well. We would hope to begin a home-to-school communication plan to let the families know and open up that communication that's so important to the school and how we work through things. And we would like to begin a professional development plan and coordinate potentially during the summer, how we will roll out that professional development for the teachers. And then begin assessment and evaluation to really discover what our hope is for the maybe areas where we're going to put in some more work to really meet all the needs of our students.
So one of my favorite stories is from a retired teacher whose grandson I had in my classroom a few years ago now. She said to him, when he came over her house one day, she said, you know, "How's school going? Do you like school?" And he said, "You know, I like it, but I just don't get it. My teacher talks about letters all day long." And so I think that that first unit in the Second Step program really is great because it teaches kids how to be a learner and why you're at school. So it's so important not to just teach the letters, but why are we teaching the letters? And how can you pay attention to me when I'm teaching the letters? You know, the skills for, your eyes are watching me, your ears are listening. It really breaks it down and makes it simple for teachers to use. One of the, as we were reflecting, one of the questions that we were asked as educators when we were coming here is to think about how these lessons were affecting our students. And I said, you know, what better way to figure that out but to ask the kids in my class? And so I teach kindergartners, five and six-year-olds. And I wish that I could have had you all in my classroom today because I was really going in thinking, I'm going to have to facilitate this. You know, remember when I took out the puppet and we did this? And I didn't have to. So I started and I just said, you know, what have we learned? I actually brought my chart. I don't know if you want to. My two questions, so I've been lucky to pilot the PATHS program, but also teach Second Step in my classroom. Sorry. Was what have we learned and, you know, how can we use that? And so these were the things that my kindergartners came up with, with not much facilitating. So they were saying that we can do the turtle, which is kind of like to take your moment of calming down. And some of the kids talk about how they have to tell their parents to do that as well. So they really transfer the skills to home. One of them says, "Well, I use the quiet space in the classroom to calm down, but at home I can go to my room." And I said, "Yes." So they really are transferring those skills. They were talking about helping friends that are hurt and listening. "Well, why is it important to listen?" "Well, so we can learn." They're kind of like, "Duh, why are you asking us these?" You know, sharing, why is sharing important? Well, if you take turns, then everybody gets a chance. Self-talk. One of my favorite moments this year was at a conference and one of my parents said, "He keeps like mumbling to himself." And he told me it was self-talk. And I said, "This is a student that was having some difficulty with executive functioning skills." And so I told him, I said, "You know, if the next thing you have to do is get your folder, you have to say in your head, 'folder, folder, folder.'" Like, that's what I have to do too when I'm trying to remember something. And so he started doing it at home to remember. "Oh yeah, I'm going up to get my shoes, 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 shoes." And so she mentioned that. And one of the best things in my classroom this year, I know Julie knows when she's walked in, is one of the skills that they've learned was to give each other compliments. And they've gotten so good at it to make them not just, "Oh, I just, I love your blue shirt." But now they're really like, "You know, the other day when we were out at recess, I really liked how you helped me pick up that ball." And they're really being specific and just really kind to each other, which is so important. So it's been great. Thanks, Julie.
Of course.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about my experience. I haven't been, I didn't get to teach this program for a really long time, but I'm looking forward to hopefully using it in the future. But when, last year, I had planned to do a science experiment. And so I, you know, best-laid plans, I got everything all ready to go. And, you know, I told the students, you know, you're going to have this role and sort of set it up. And once the group started working, it just became apparent to me very quickly that, you know, this wasn't going to work. We weren't going to be able to work as a collaborative team. And so something that, you know, I took a step back and I went to Kathy and I said, you know, "I'm going to need some help helping these kids to work collaboratively, more so than things that I've done in the past." And I heard about Second Step and I was really excited for it. So we kind of worked together and put some lessons together in place. And things were going okay. And, you know, I'd kind of go off the cuff and try to explain to the students, you know, "We're going to learn about empathy." And then I got this amazing kit, a program, where I was like, "Oh, remember how I said it this way? This is what I meant," you know? Because it was just right there for me. And just the idea that other teachers would have the same common language so that if my students were in the lunchroom, you know, the way that people would respond to them and the way that the kids would interact with each other, they would have the same language. It wouldn't be just, "Well, in Mrs. McGuire's classroom, you know, she says it this way." And it would be more common language. So I'm really looking forward to that and helping my students be able to collaborate better.
And I've got the older fifth-grade students who come from three different elementary schools. And I have to say, I am really excited about several aspects, one of which is I was quite surprised at how engaged the students are. They are really serious about talking to each other. With, you know, part of the program for Second Step, video at the fifth-grade level are videos. And they're watching situations. And the kids are watching it sometimes, "Could we see that part again?" And then they start talking. Well, I think, and it's the inferential, I think one of the big things is probably for me, having them start to see a different point of view. That's something, it's, you know, see the light bulbs open? Oh, not everybody here sees it the way I do. And I can start, once you have experience talking about that, you can start. There are students who empathy is a long-term goal. But what they can do and already can do is see that different people have different ways of seeing things. They have different feelings. If I'm kind to them, their day is going to be better. And if their day is going to be better, mine's probably going to be better too. It's a tight-knit group. So when you work in a group, I think having the kids where they're able to talk more about their feelings, share, and really focus on calming down. The calming techniques are one of the things you heard mentioned in kindergarten. You also in fifth grade. And we talk about zones of regulation, which is a separate program, but works in very well about how to bring yourself from a, you know, slightly anxious state or maybe a little upset, back to, you know, back to being calm and things. The children all select different things that work for them and different things in different situations, they have things for home. And they will, one of the things I've found is they'll talk to each other. "I can't talk to you right now. You're not in the green zone." So when they have a problem, they get down to the green zone, then they work out a solution. But I think, I know one of the, you know, one of the girls was talking in discussion today. We did the same thing they did in kindergarten. We did in fifth grade. Had them write it on file cards, but talk first. And what she said was, "Everybody always says calm down, but nobody ever tells me how to do it." And I think that, you know, it's my job to find out how I can calm down. And I thought, "That's great." And then the whole idea of problem solving, how do you go to solve a problem? People say, "Well, figure it out." Well, you need steps. Get some, calm down, get some options, get adult help if it's a serious problem. That kind of thing. I think just having the step-by-step has really worked well. The point of view, though, I think was really huge. And we've used it in literature discussions, you know, looking at characters, why would that character do that? How do different characters see what's going on? We see it in their writing. The idea of having an audience. And you're writing for someone else, how are they going to perceive it? So I think that's, you know, that's another aspect. I think for me, the children are more engaged in trying to help it be a more positive classroom atmosphere. They're talking, they're coming up with ideas. "I think we could do this. I think we could do that." Kinder to each other. And it's not that the children I had in previous years weren't kind, but they are kinder to each other. Talking to parents, they've noticed some differences with the children just talking, bringing up issues. Because we talk about, well, if things, self-advocacy, if things don't work, aren't working out well, how to speak up for yourself. And the children are doing that at home. Somewhat a little kinder, not always going overboard, but a little kinder to siblings and that kind of thing. And then I've been teaching, you know, the other end. I've been teaching a long time in this district. I think probably this is, to me, one of the most important things that I've ever seen the district take on. You talk about the Common Core standards, getting students academically ready for college and careers. But what we have to also make sure is that they're ready to enter the workplace, that they're ready to deal themselves and be personally ready, but also ready to work with a group of people. And it starts in school. John mentioned at the beginning, we can't expect folks to just pick this up by a zmosis. It needs to be taught. And it needs to be taught sequentially over a bunch of years. So I'm really excited about that. And also, going along with being around a while, I'm a grandfather. And a grandfather of two students at Thornton's Ferry School. And I heard about this program before I was involved in the committee. One of my granddaughters is in, at Thornton's Ferry, in kindergarten right now. And she has talked over the past few years, because she started in three-year-old preschool, the things about calming down. I could see it at family functions. She'd go out by herself. You could see some of the self-talk, that kind of thing. And it's really made a difference. I know my daughter mentioned being able to talk with her own daughter about her feelings and that, that kind of thing. Just helping the social part, talking about what went on in school, but also what's going on with her friends. So to me, you know, so that's a personal, besides the kids at school, that really hits home. So I'm not a parent of anybody in the school. I'm a grandparent and I really appreciate the district's effort in that.
I see Cindy so far, and I think I see Naomi.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you. I know that this is not something that you've taken your time to find the right solution. We all know that. It's been an evolution over time to get to the point that you're at now. And you clearly have done a lot of research and preparation to get to this point. So I thank you for that. Secondly, I like the idea, just a piece of feedback, about the process you went through with the rubric components and mirroring what we've done for the math program. Because I feel like that gives us a consistency within the district by which we assess our curriculums across the board. So I appreciate that as well. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is if you could more, maybe you've said this before, so if you did, I really apologize. But to really define for me the Tier One versus the Tier Two and what that means.
So I've been asked to facilitate questions. And Fern, would you be able to talk more in detail about that?
So Tier One would be the easiest way to understand it is it's for everybody. It's the core. It's what everybody will receive. So, you know, it doesn't, it's not about any presenting problem or any issue that's occurring. It's really for all students, just the way we would want to teach anything in the math curriculum, which is for all students. curriculum, which is for all students. Tier two and tier three become more and more targeted as you move up the tiers. So tier two, in terms of social emotional learning, may be a small group that is, that a child attends to work on a specific skill such as paying attention or self-regulation or something of that nature, anxiety or, you know, anxious, being anxious in school or that kind of thing. So there's, there's sort of, as you move up. But tier one, the beauty of this program is that it helps embed it into the, every classroom and across the school so that, as you've heard, the terms, this common language starts to sort of infiltrate. And so everybody sort of has that same base or foundation of knowledge.
And then I also understand, I think going back to what you had said at the very beginning, which is that 80% of the time was spent with 20% of the students. So what I understand is that you have data to back up the fact that if you spend more time on tier one, that you're going to minimize tier two and tier three because of all of the reasons why you chose this program. Is there anything else that you can say to elaborate on that?
When we first did that initial data catch years ago, that was K to 12. And so we, as a committee, are looking also to do another data catch K to 12 as well. However, we're also, as you know, part of a self-central collaborative and we're collecting data for our earliest of learners across four districts, K to four. And in doing that, what we found twice now is that we collected data at tier one, tier two, and tier three. And based on how the helpers performed a data catch and how much time they spent in each of those tiers, we're now pretty evenly balanced. And you see much more in the data at tier one than we did four years ago. So we already see some data at the K to four level that indicates that the time spent by our helpers, including nurses, assistant principals, counselors, behavior specialists, are becoming more tier one. The difficulty, and again, this is a very much an emergent field of data and assessments, is how are we going to capture what teachers are doing? How do we capture that time? Because teachers will be the one, the primary providers of tier one, just as they are with reading, writing, and math. So we're looking at how do we capture that data? And so we're really looking forward to see now K to 12. We anticipate that that will occur more, that tier one from K to five. But we anticipate as we look to implement and look more at social emotional learning at sixth grade and middle school and high school, you'll see again, those numbers move from tier three to tier one and tier two.
If I understand this correctly, aside from actually, you know, initially, initially your research showed you, if I'm hearing correctly, that you would improve or you would reduce the tier two and tier three with a focus on tier one. But what you're saying is that through our own resource, research within the district, we've been able to validate that as well?
Exactly.
Okay. Great. And then, I think, lastly, I think it, I just wanted to add one more comment in how it makes sense. When you're starting to talk about the curriculum, which is, that's been chosen, the curriculum, the, the program for the curriculum that's been chosen, the focus areas from that circle that you had given us in our presentation, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, social awareness are thus the areas that comprise the social and emotional learning. And if I heard you correctly as well, you, you were saying that this is about student readiness to learn as well as preparing for these soft skills that we hear sometimes, right? These are social emotional learning, to me, equals soft skills in how they help prepare our students for success in their future while in our district and once they move on.
Perfectly said.
Okay. Well, thank you again for all of your work. I really appreciate it. It's clear that, again, that you did a really thorough job and I'm, I'm really proud of the work that you've done for our district and I really commend you for it. Thank you.
Naomi?
Yeah, of course, I first have to mirror all the, the things that we just said. It's wonderful to see this and it's very nice to see it coming together in this way. There's one thing that I noticed and two questions about it. The first is, I really like the way that what you've created is not a one-shot inoculation model, but it really builds as any curriculum does over time and assumes teaching and reteaching across the grades, which is marvelous. Because you could have chosen to just take this and inoculate it at all the grades and then give it a year. And that is not nearly as effective as the model that you chose. That said, what, what becomes kind of interesting for me is how does this program then take into account students who come and go or moving from grade to grade? It's the same kind of question we have for math curriculum. I'm looking at the unit two empathy and seeing identifying feelings across various years, which they should be. How is it the same and different across the years when, when certain topics are addressed?
Kim, would you be willing to talk more about that? You spent some time in first grade and kindergarten and I think you'll be able to provide that perspective, that scope and sequence?
Yeah, it came somewhat to first and K. I think in kindergarten, it's really teaching students to identify emotions and what they are and to recognize them. Whereas in first grade, that was building upon like, okay, now that I'm recognizing that I'm angry, what do I do with that emotion? How can I help myself as a learner? And I imagine, as, I've not taught all the levels, but I imagine it kind of builds upon itself and becomes more complicated as Bill had talked about, you know, seeing the fifth graders where as some of the skills are the same, you know, I mean, the, the tasks that you're asking to do, I think, become more complicated. But even now, as we're listening to each other, you're using the same skills I teach my kindergarteners to watch me and have your body still in your eye, you know? So some of the skills are the same and I think just being reinforced as the years go on and in different curricular areas, you know, when you go to the art room, you know, being a listener looks the same. So some things, I think, build upon each other and some things, you know, are the same.
The other thing was, you rather tantalizingly, at least from my perspective, dropped to the term executive function into all this. And then it occurs in the main list and then it doesn't really recur, at least not in the units that we have. I'm assuming it's embedded in a variety of ways. But I'm curious what your approach to that is because executive function is complicated and varies from person to person in all these different ways. So I'd love to hear a little bit more about where that fits in this.
Let's talk a little bit about it. When we're looking at the executive functioning, the children are recognizing what the tasks they have at hand, what they need to do. So part of this, and it's embedded across our day in fifth grade anyway, but there's a lot higher demand. So we talk, we're upfront, we have a limited time, so we look at scheduling, what we need to do. Then we look at, how am I feeling? So the self-calming that they do in kindergarten and preschool, we're also doing. That's a, that's a big part of it, to not let things get out of hand, to talk when you need help and you're starting to get a problem, to ask for help. So I think those, those components right there are built right across all the lessons. And I think then being more socially aware of yourself, but aware of your, your neighbors, that, you know, it's a, it's community. The community of care, it really is, you know, so-and-so is really, seemed to be having trouble with that. But also the openness, I need help, I'm going to go get help. So I think that's the foundational skills built in, how do you keep track and how do you manage everything? We can help with, that's something that's, we're also building on. So children don't just show up in fifth grade without ever having done this. But there are new, there are new demands and we are upfront with how to do that. And I found that, find that the time spent in these kind of lessons really, really pays off, you know? I don't have any question at all that this is valuable because you can see they're more confident when they get frustrated. I see kids, could I take a walk on the stairs? Could I do this? You know, things are getting too much, I, I need a break. And to have, and you realize why children need movement in the classroom, why they need a chance, you know, planned breaks, but as, well as being able to advocate for them. So maybe I went on a little too long, but I think.
I'm really looking forward to seeing this evolve over the next year or two. Thanks.
And I know that you were talking about the budget and if it passes, putting it in. And the good news is our operating budget is below default. So I think we're in good shape. So I think, you know, this, this is definitely something that we're going to look forward to implementing in the fall with the new, the new budget. I know that this is the first budgetary move asked for with the mental health committee. And it's doing exactly what we need it to do, make a positive learning environment for our students. That's the most important thing. You can't learn in an environment that doesn't help you thrive. And I think it's so important that we've been able to be responsive as a district to, to what it is and what it isn't, especially in your presentation tonight. You know, we are not here to be, you know, and I'm just going to use just a, an outrageous blog I read that we were a mental health facility. And that's the furthest from the case. We're an educational institution, we're focused on the end game, which is producing a well-rounded student that can function in the workforce or, or higher, higher education learning, whatever they choose, and giving them the tools to be able to thrive in either. So I thank you for that. I look forward to seeing this roll out. K through five is obviously the most impactful formation of a lifelong learner. And I think this is, this is wonderful work that will create great dividends. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
And John Sting for part two of his show. So I will move on to, I love it. Thank you. I will move on to item number five, which is the Department of Education Compliance Report for the Special Education Indicator 11.
Well, John's getting ready. Can I just ask that we put this, the presentation out on the, on the website from this last agenda item?
Yes, Marge?
And the other thing, too, is I think our thought was, I didn't say it, but that we would put this on consent for April 15th because we really felt strongly that we wanted the governing board to really weigh in on this. So tonight, if you saw it, it said, propose social emotional curriculum. And we wanted to share with you exactly the process that was taken. But I think the expectation would be, this is so important and it's taken so long that we would really like you to affirm it. So if I could put that on consent on the 15th?
That sounds perfect.
And as you see, the team has left me. And the team, for this next part, I'm going to start with and talk about that really is so mass it would fill the room and then some for, for the next part. And I talk about often the support I get from the coordinators of special ed in all the buildings and the principals and the administrative assistants, the paraeducators, the whole group really add towards this indicator. As I talk about some of the accolades that we, we get for being in compliance for so long, well, that's not done easily. And I, I want to begin today by talking about the fact that this is a huge team that puts this together. And I'm only sitting here as representative of that team. So Indicator 11, what is it? So the state of New Hampshire Department of Education is mandated by the USDAO, Department of Education, to really look at where are we when we have initial evaluations of our students. And this is part of their state performance plan. You'll notice in years past, I've come before you and I presented our determination report. And that's the report with all the zeros on it. And I've come before you and I've showed you that report. Well, when the state went through an audit a few years ago, they were told that that one-time yearly reporting isn't really enough because it's hard to tell a district, well, you're deficient in all these areas. And you find out all in one big kind of swoop at the end of the year. They felt that really it was the state's responsibility to report out on every indicator. So Marge and I often discuss these and our mailboxes are full more, more often times than not. And we talk about the different indicators that come forward. And some of the indicators are things to do with finance, as I've talked before, some are to do with our preschool outcomes. And this one in particular is a, a pretty dense one. So I'm going to do my best tonight to walk, walk us all through it. And, and if there is further information you need, feel free to reach out to me and I can certainly, if I don't have the information, I can get it. But I'll do my best on this one. So as I said, this data is collected from August 15th, 2018 to November 15th, 2018. And what does it measure? It measures what parents gave consent to evaluate their children? It measures, did we evaluate those children in the 60, 60 required days? And then within those 60 days, did we meet and talk about, was the child, a child with a disability or, or not? And the federal target for this compliance is 100%. This is one of the higher ones. And they want you to be right on with this. So the three areas I talked about, referral, evaluation, and determination of eligibility. These are the three major factors that they look at when they look at Indicator 11. So initial referral, this is where it starts. And any person may refer a child under the age of 21 years old to an IEP team. And this is our special ed teams in the building. They're from, made by anyone who feels a student may have a disability. And it is up to the school at this point, within 15 business days of that referral, to have a meeting. And they call us a disposition of referral meeting. And this is again determined by law. And at that meeting, there's really two things that you talk about. One, whether the concerns raised by the referral can be addressed utilizing existing student supports and services available to children. We talked a little bit about tier one, tier two, and tier three in our first, in ourselves' presentation. And I think those tier two supports for children, those tier one supports, sometimes can meet the needs of students in our buildings. And that team determines that at that point about, are those, those existing pieces in place really help the student where he is? Or the next one it may be, do we have to look further? Do we need more information? Do we have to do more evaluations? And that's the next step that the team does determine. At that point, if we decide to evaluate, the team meets and determines that more information's needed. They look at a bunch of different assessments. They look at the functional information, the developmental information of the child, the academic history of the child, interventions that have been tried and attempted and the ones that are in place currently that are working. They look at information provided by the parent. And, and they look at, is there anything provided by a physician? And then they determine whether a child has a disability or whether the child requires specifically designed instruction, instruction just for what that child's needs may be. And again, along this way, we need parents involved and we need parents' consent to move forward with evaluation. There's a variety of assessment tools that we can use when we're determining this. And again, I talked about these areas in my last slide, but we have assessment tools that... again, I talked about these areas in my last slide, but we have assessment tools that walk through and look at each one of these areas. And we make sure that when we're doing this, that we're doing it in the best interest of the student, and again, with parents' permission. So the timeline, this has to happen within 60 days. The last part of this, last part of it is determination of eligibility, eligibility, excuse me. Upon completion of the administration of all these assessments, we have to get together and meet with the parents. The group of professionals come together, and this can include the classroom teacher, a special education teacher, usually a special ed coordinator, any therapists, or anyone else who has interest of the child and knows the child best within our building. And again, the parents are involved. So when we meet, and we have our meeting, the law requires, and this has changed in law over the last few years, that we have to have all our assessments to the parent five days prior to the meeting. So I'm going to pause there for a second. And although it says 60 days, there's a timeline to this that I need to point out, because this is why our team needs to be proactive and ahead of this. We have a meeting that we determined further evaluation needs to happen. That ball, that ball, and that clock starts rolling right then. So we have to have the assessments done prior to the five days to mail out to the parents, to get them to the parents. So that now limits our time back to at least seven days prior to the 60 days being up. Then you have to give 10 days of notice for a meeting. So that backs us up even more. So our 60, all of a sudden, becomes about 45 to 50 days in that, to stay in compliance, because we have to meet prior to the 60th day. So that time gets crunched a little tighter. And that's why it's kind of, when I say it takes a large team to be able to pull this off, coordinate everyone's schedule, get the parents involved, and have the meeting. And I just wanted to point that out. So again, it's such a proactive process, and it takes many educators to be involved in this. I cannot, again, commend enough our teams and our building leaders that really make this all happen. Need to be very focused on what's happening. The way it works now, too, is we really, ourselves, Student Service Office, need to pull these reports ourselves. We need to be aware when they're coming out. We need to look at our data. We need to make sure that we are in compliance with all these. We spend a lot of time in the NESIS system, which is the New Hampshire Student Educational Information System. And that's where all our data has to be inputted. And each one of the buildings, each one of the coordinators, the administrators in my office, are all the ones responsible for putting that information into NESIS. And it has to be accurate, because that's where they pulled the data from. And again, a big part of this is our families, too, and their willingness to come in. It's not easy. And to say, can you come in and take two hours out of your regular day and your regular job to walk in and meet with us to talk about your son or daughter's abilities? And it's a hard meeting sometimes, and to hear those messages. But I thank them and their relationship along with that, to be able to stay in compliance and stay in where we are with all the indicator asks us to do. And then there's a lot of training that goes into this, too. We have to do a lot of training on how to use the NESIS system, and a lot of training on kind of, what are the timelines and criterias, so we make sure we meet all the needs for our students. So now, what happens to different districts who don't meet those timelines, and that don't have 100% in compliance? So universal is the first one. That's 95 to 100% compliance. And that's really what we are in Merrimack. And that means there's no real action needed. They continue to offer professional development and webinars through the DOE. We continually get trained on how to pull the data, be proactive about the data, and know where we stand at given points of the year. Then there's a universal, excuse me, then there's targeted. And that's really 94 to 65% of compliance in there. And what happens there is that they're required to complete a data review. And the state audits this. There's training modules that have to come down, and have to be submitted, have to be done by all of your coordinators. And then there's an essential question, kind of questionnaire and report you have to fill out and submit back to the state that is reviewed, and that you have to kind of, it's kind of an improvement plan, and you have to do that for your next time around. And then finally, there's intensive. And this is when you have to do monthly checks with the DOE, and you have to review the data, and you have to make sure that your modules are all completed by all your staff, and that your essential questions review, and your action plan is reviewed, and you have to have a meeting with representatives of DOE to make sure that's all in place. So in Merrimack, we've chose to be proactive about this, and not have the targeted or the intensive compliance areas, because that is not where we choose to spend our time. So is there any questions I can answer about Indicator 11? And as you see by your report, Merrimack is 100% in compliance.
Thank you, John. Cindy, I think your hand's up?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the number of initial evaluations. So what I'm seeing is 27. How does that come about? Is that something that the state just pulls the data? Does that represent, is 27 compared to X number of referrals? What is that 27?
So I'll go back to my first slide here, Cindy. In my first slide, it talks about the data is collected from August 15th to November 15th. So in that time, from August 15th to November 15th, we had 27 brand-new referrals and initial evaluations that we chose. We had many referrals, but we had, out of those, 27 of those initial, of those, all those referrals, we decided to go ahead and do evaluation on.
So it's 100% of the...
Yeah, so 100% of all the ones we had to do during that time period, we had 100% compliance on, and we made the 60-day mark, all of them.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? It sounds like, oh, Marge, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize the importance of this report and other reports that you've gotten from the Bureau at the Department of Ed relative to special education, because one of the things that I find is that we see 100% compliance. And as John points out, this takes so many people in our district being coordinated to get it done. And you can imagine with a timeframe, it can easily slip. So when I'm with my colleagues, and we're looking at district work, there are not many that hit the 100%. And so I hear about the interventions that are going on from the Bureau. And one of the things that I'm very pleased about is the fact that we have not had to deal with that. So I just have to say from my perspective, because this is about the fourth or fifth report that you've gotten, what a special thing it is, because we can then focus our energies on other aspects of special ed and student services that we need to, rather than be doing additional work for the Bureau. So I just felt the need to pass, to say that tonight, because we've been just so fortunate with John and all the other persons in the district that really worked to make this happen.
Thank you, Marge. Are there any other questions on Indicator 11? Seeing none, we know that's a difficult thing to track and perform on, so we thank you very much for your hard work and for the spectacular results.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
And we are on to item number six, which is the Board's response to the proposed 2019 Voters Guide for the School District Warrant. At our place settings, we received fresh copies of the mailer, the Voters Guide. And this is, the copy that we have tonight was reviewed by legal counsel to make sure everything was sound and appropriate. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt.
Well, as we have done for several years, we try and take the articles that are going to be placed on the ballot, and condense them in an easy-to-read, easy-to-understand language for everybody. The legalese language that we have to use when we construct warrant articles isn't really conducive to understanding what the purpose of the warrant article is a lot of times. So we just try and do the Voters Guide. We've been doing it for quite a few years now. And it's been our practice to present this to the Board for any modifications, any suggestions that they would like to see before it goes to final print. And then it goes to our print shop, and then it goes to the post office, then it gets mailed to everybody in town, and posted on the website. So it's just here for your consideration. Anything you see, just please pipe up.
Andy?
So there's two comments that I have. One of the, so there's varying levels of articulation under each of the article summaries that you've got. One of the points that's, in Article 7 around the turf field, one of the points that's missing in the summary, which is in the, what's printed on the ballot but not in the summary here, is the fact that this being a parent petition for the turf field, not only are they looking to appropriate the sum of 1.2 million as the warrant article, but it should also mention, I think, at least, I'd like to get the perception of the Board, is that it should say that the parents that do this petition are also looking at ways to offset the costs through fundraising and sponsorships and things like that, to at least show that there's parent involvement and activity behind this petition warrant article, in addition to just asking for the 1.2 million. So that's my comment. I don't know if other people share that sentiment, but at least it helps to round out a little bit the intent of the article. So I'll pause. I have another question, but...
So on that note, I think it's something that's been publicly vetted. And they did present that to us at multiple board meetings, that they were looking at fundraising and looking for business support, et cetera, and that that's part of their commitment in this project. And what I would say for, by petition, yes, it is all, it really is mostly all parents, based on what was validated, but to that end, it doesn't need to be a parent. So by citizen's petition, so it's about registered voters in the town of Merrimack. I think that's, you know...
I don't want to get into semantics about who was behind it. There was the petitioners that were voters and, you know, registered voters and things. But the point is, is that, and I know they presented to us at the Board about what their intent is, but as we know, not everybody watches board meetings. And I think it's just interesting to put out here to also state that those behind this warrant article are looking at ways to help offset some of the costs through some of these activities, because it is written in the warrant article, and it was presented to us. That's my only comment on that, is to have a little more, potentially, a couple of sentences about that. Just might help.
Okay. And is that, is that good with the Board? I think the consensus with the Board is it makes sense.
It just, it just is full clarity on what the warrant article has.
The intent.
The intent behind it. Right. That's it. And it's not saying that we support, or whatever it's to the voters, but it needs to be clear that that's the intent of those petitioning it.
And that's what we voted on, the support, that we voted on, had that content in it.
Correct. Absolutely. Okay, on that one?
Yeah.
We good?
Mike, item two, go ahead.
Okay. Item two. So this is something that I know that I, as a board member, have taken heat on in the past, and it's gotten worse as times progress and the economy has gotten, and evaluations have gone up. I think that where we give the example of the tax impact on a $200,000 house, some people view as not genuine, not genuine in the current model, given the fact that the average sale of a house in Merrimack is over $300,000, based on what the research I did. So I talked with Shannon, and there's two approaches we could take. We could either use a $300,000 house as an example, or say, this is the impact for every $100,000 your house is valued at, just to help people more easily reach out. So...
Yeah, when you're, when you look at your tax bill, it says what the assessed valuation is, and most people, at least I do, I look at that to see what my house is valued at. So 100K would give you the option, or just doing the math easily, going from 300 to 400 to 450 to 500.
Right. So for example, pick an article, Article 5, where you want to do the emergency repair fund. It's up to 6 cents per thousand, or you could say that it would be $6 per $100,000.
$100 with the value.
Right, with the value of your house.
And do that consistently throughout the entire voter's guide?
Yeah, I was using that example.
Okay.
Can I add one more edit to that, where it says $11.70 dollars on a 200? So it's got the dollar sign proceeding and dollars at the end?
Yeah.
The other, the other thing, since we're talking about that one, is in the third paragraph, you say, "After the payment for the switchgear, Fundwell always has a balance of $45,000. This article will bring the total available for emergencies up to approximately $245, only because, remember that 200 is the maximum, and it could be less, depending on the...
Right.
...on the amount of the excess balance, so...
Up to approximately, yes.
Right. Because you have the right word on the tax impact, but anyway, those are my two comments.
I agree.
Yeah, and that dollar sign and dollars is in every tax impacting.
So you want to say by citizen petition?
You're right, it has to be exactly that.
Just use the same phrasing that's in the warrant.
Okay.
That way. And if legal, I mean, whatever. But did Matt pick up on the fact that every description is, has the dollar sign and the word dollars?
Yeah, we just, we covered that.
Well, I just, I didn't know if he heard or not.
Yeah. Cindy and Naomi?
Along that same vein, I think if we're sticking to, let's say, the dollar sign, if we could do, when it's a cent, 0.35, so it makes it clear that it's less than a dollar? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
So you're having the same problem with the cents that I'm having with the dollars?
It's all, it's the same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah. So if you're gonna, if it's something that cents, and you're gonna keep the dollar sign for consistency, I would put a zero there first to make it more clear.
And just drop the word cents, because it would be, gotcha. Okay. Good editing.
Well, it is 35 cents a thousand.
Yep.
Yeah, but you have dollar, dollar point two-five cents. It's sort of a redundant.
Get rid of the cents.
Yeah. Get rid of the word cents, get rid of the word dollars, and you're in good shape. And maybe proceed a zero on the ones that are under a dollar.
All right.
Okay. And Naomi?
So I really like the way that you have, by petition, special meeting and so forth, so that people have a sense of where these came from. I think that the vast majority of people, though, may have no idea what that means. It would be nice if there's space to, in the ones that are petitioned, to add some brief description of what that is.
I was thinking that for Article 7 and Article 8, which are the by-petition articles, if somewhere I could put a little asterisk there, and then on the bottom, seeing that I have, I'm just thinking out loud now, okay? And on the bottom, where I have some space, I could say, "Petitioned articles are created by registered voters of the town of Merrimack upon receipt of 25 or more signatures," which is the definition of a petition warrant article. I don't know if that's too busy, or too confusing, or whatever.
And I would just say something about certified by the school district clerk.
Just say validated signatures, or something like that, you know?
Validated?
Well, I mean, they have to be validated as being legal voters.
Or whatever they are, saying anything is...
Yeah, whatever. Right.
With the idea of footnoting, it makes perfect sense. I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, just a simple sentence, not too long, just a simple sentence.
Validated, certified, and stamped off, and embossed, and everything by the school district clerk.
Wax sealed.
Wax sealed, everything, the ring down. Yes. Got it.
Cindy?
One other thing, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but I would like, at our next joint meeting with town council, to once again talk about combining the Voters Guides. I think it's very confusing for the general public to get them at different times, and, you know, you have multiple Article 7 here, Article 7 there. I think it's very confusing. And I would like us to take that up with them again, to see what we can do to get some synergies in sending this out, even if there's a notation, "This was prepared by town council," you know, XYZ, you know, however it's, but I think it would be... but I think it would be less confusing for our constituents, taxpayers to get one instead of two.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of social media confusion about the articles and cross. Somebody said was supporting Article 7 on the turf field and somebody said, but I thought that was one of the, one of the, uh, the votes for a, um, negotiated contract.
It's funny because in, uh, in Bedford, they took our exact format and recreated it. And so you get a sep, separate one for the school, which personally, I'm just giving you my opinion. Personally, I like because I know it's the school and I know exactly what it is. And I just keep it in a special spot, right under my pillow, you know, so. But, but anyway, it's just, uh, we, we definitely have it a conversation. As long as they don't do the clip art anymore like they used to, I'm good with it.
Okay. So with the edits, we should be good to go. I know we're on a deadline. So we're going to go on faith and trust and capable hands that we have in our employ. And we will get this out to the print and the voters this week. No pressure. Have fun with that. We're on to item number seven, which is the third review of proposed 2019-20 school calendar, including question regarding presidential primary date. So I will turn it over to Marge.
Thank you. So the first thing I want to do is to thank Andy because at our last meeting, it was he who, um, brought up the question about the presidential primary. And in building the calendar, um, I had not talked, uh, with Lynn Christensen, the school moderator, um, about that. And so after our meeting, I had a conversation with her. And you will see at the top of the calendar, I have boxed in, um, what her thought was. And that is, um, that we definitely need to cancel school on the date that the Secretary of State sets for the presidential primary. In other words, I think she feels, that there are going to be a lot of people that are going to come out, um, on that date. Clearly, we do not know, uh, whether he will set it in January or February. And that's the reason why we need to put at the top of the page, it will be in either month. We know it will be, um, a Tuesday. And so I did not mark it accordingly, but what it would mean is one additional day in June. So if we had absolutely no inclement weather, the last day of school would be June 16th. So I, I do feel that is necessary based on what Lynn has suggested.
Andy, your hand's up. And Cindy's next.
So just to clarify, so the last day of the 15th does, does take into account the?
It does not.
It does not?
She just mentioned it does not. So the 16th, we'll add the 16th to the Tuesday when we publish it.
Oh, okay. So, so, so the MU days slide by one.
Right.
Across. So it'll be five makeup days, but they'll be a one day later than the 16th.
Right. And it'll be, uh, the footnote at the bottom will say between June 17th and June 23rd.
Okay. I guess I was reading and not listening.
Cindy?
Yeah, so I just proposed this, um, to say really that we talk about it is we had originally slated the 20th, um, Martin Luther King Junior Day as a day off. But now with another day potentially in January, is it worth switching? Is it, is it worth having school on Martin Luther King Day, um, because we will have another day off for the primary?
I think that there was a definitive choice to have school on Martin Luther King Day. The one that was, I would say razor close was Columbus Day. Oh, yeah, to, I'm sorry, yes. To, so both, both days of school scheduled to be closed, but the vote was much closer for Columbus than Martin Luther King. So that would be my just, that'd be my only two cents, but we know the impact on, on soccer and banned and college visits and all the others. So it would, it would definitely come at a consequence. Andy, did you have a, is your hand, right, almost touching the thing? Do I, or were you?
Um, no, I mean, I just, I guess I would say then in the future that knowing the next primary year, which would be four years from now, that maybe that's one of the questions we ask parents then, given that the primary will be held because that might have skewed the responses that we would have received from parents. So.
Agreed.
So I, I could go either way, but I wanted to at least just bring it up for discussion.
But the comment I was going to make is if you go back and look at the other calendars we saw that did have the, that day, they all had Martin Luther King Day off as well. So the, the other districts tend to have both of those. They, they tend to not get rid of Martin Luther King Day on a year with his president's primary. They have both. So. It's, but it, it's very valid to ask the question. Just saying, other districts behave in the same way we're going to do it. So.
And I, the only thing I would also add to that, that'd be another day close to midterms when technical education students would miss a day of instruction. So I would also worry a little bit about that. So, um, with that, we feel comfortable with starting school September 3rd per the, uh, tentative agreement we have with the Merrimack Teachers Association, which has us starting school after Labor Day and concluding school on June 16th with makeup days making the potential last day of school, June 23rd. If we have a doozy of a winter. So with that, are there any questions? So I'll entertain a motion to accept the calendar as amended. Cindy, made by Cindy, second, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. And Chris will be at college by then. So there you go. He's over it. Thank you. And we are on to the housekeeping portion of the show, which is the approval of the March 18th, 2019 minutes, public minutes and the March 25th, 2019 non-public minutes. So first I'll entertain a motion to accept March 18th, made by Andy, second, seconded by Naomi. Are there any edits to the minutes? Cindy?
On page three, line 90, um, I would just amend that to say at initial thought, Board Member Gualyumi commented that she too felt the line should be permanent and not painted. They wanted input from those closer to it in the district, like maintenance and, uh, the athletic director.
Excellent. Are there any other edits? Seeing none, we'll put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. I will entertain a, a motion to get, to approve non-public minutes from March 25th, 2019, made by Cindy, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Onto item number nine, which is the consent agenda with Mark.
Thank you. On consent tonight, we have the following educator retirements. Anne Bergeron, family and consumer science teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Janet Brown, math teacher at Merrimack High School. Nancy Sumsky, English teacher at Merrimack Middle School. In addition, we have the following administrator resignation. Bridie Bellamere, principal of Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. And we have the following administrator nomination. Julie DeLuca, principal at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
Principal elect.
Pardon me.
Sorry. Cindy?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? By Naomi, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Item number 10 is other correspondence. Um, I'll start with correspondence in our packets today. We have a letter from our attorney, um, attorney PL from Wadley Star &amp; Peters. And we asked based on some, um, just anecdotal feedback that we received, um, from just, you know, the public at large, whether, um, we are within our rights to charge for parking and, um, at the high school. My gosh, sorry. Thank you. Um, we don't charge anywhere else because, you know, student parking at the high school. Thank you again. Uh, so with that, um, we are well within our rights to do that. And, uh, it's been verified by our legal counsel. And, um, the legal foundation behind that is there. So if there are any questions, um, you know, from parents, we absolutely would be glad to entertain them, um, call district offices. Um, and we'd be glad to, uh, to work with you to get you clarifying information. Is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none? Comments? Are there any comments before the board? Seeing none? New business, number 11. Is there a new business to come before the board? Seeing none? Committee reports, which is item number 12. Cindy?
Um, last week I was at a PERC meeting, um, and the subject of that was the social emotional learning. The folks that were very much here tonight. So I don't have any other updates because you pretty much had witnessed, um, what I had heard last week.
Um, I see John. Uh, Chris, I almost did it again. Sorry.
Uh, last week, the cavalcade of bands happened on Thursday and, uh, every band played really well. And this weekend, uh, the robotics team participated at the UNH district event. And, uh, we got picked for the sixth seed alliance and we got in the corner finals. We won the, uh, industrial design award.
Congratulations. And Andy?
This is sort of a non-meeting report. Um, planning and building was supposed to meet last, last Monday, a week ago, to, um, go over the, um, some of the updates on the, uh, the SE Sped building research they're doing. The delay in their meeting, it didn't happen was because, um, Matt is working with, uh, a vendor to get, um, an updated quote and specification on, uh, on what a reconstructed building on the Brentwood site would be. So the planning and building committee is, um, waiting on that report. And once they get it, um, they will meet. Um, and, uh, then compile all their data so that they can come to this board likely in the May timeframe to share their, uh, research and their recommendations around the building.
I don't have a committee report, but I want to comment on a committee that, um, we have servants at the board on. And that is the, uh, communications committee. And I, as a parent, received a communication survey this week about preferred methods of communications for things like information about what's going on in the classroom, emergency environment situations and, and what types and timeliness of communications are expected. I thought it was very well done and prepared and I want to thank them for their work. So I know a lot of thought and care went into getting those prepared and delivered. So congratulations to that committee work. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number 13, which is public comments on agenda items.
Rosemary Rung, 21 Ministerial Drive. Um, a couple of things. One, I was so impressed with that presentation by the teachers and administrators regarding the social emotional learning. So really want to commend the board for just having a staff like that. It really was great. And I think I'm now serious about having them come up and, and do it in Concord. Um, and the other thing, I agree with Andy about the, um, uh, as far as the tax impact, how we can communicate that better on the voters' guide. I agree with you on that. And also with Cindy about, I mean, as a voter, a citizen, it would be great having it just go as one document, even if you have to put a different colored page in for the school district. But it doesn't seem to make much sense to have two different voter guides for one election, even though there are two different ballots. People in their mind don't see it that way. So I think that, and I think there must be a big cost savings on that as well. So, uh, maybe working with the town next year on it. And then the other thing, I, I just got done shepherding two petition warrant articles through the water district. And, um, um, the, the language which resonates and explains it to people is just a petition warrant articles appear on the ballot by petition of 25 registered voters. And you can, the other thing I added to is rather than by action of the governing body. So people know that it wasn't action of the governing body that 21 registered voters, that's all you have to tell them. So I, I wrote it down. I'll pass it down. And then there are a couple of things I forgot to mention during the legislative update. We have some really good news. We had a student, a high school student from Merrimack High Senior, Robert D. Felice, who served his page at the New Ha, New Hampshire House three weeks, two weeks ago. And it was a very busy day. It was, uh, it wasn't a regularly scheduled session day. And I, every time I saw him, he's running around. So he was busy. And then the, um, the next day when we had session, Kaylee McFarland, who is also from Merrimack, she sang the national anthem and she did a wonderful job. And then this Thursday, when we have session day, and when I mean session day, all the state representatives gather in Representatives Hall and that's where we vote on bills. But I'm making a unanimous consent. It's a special announcement that's, um, that closes a session to commend the Merrimack High School Science Olympiad team. And, um, they'll be getting a special commendation from the Speaker of the House as well. That's a secret, but this is a public meeting, so not anymore. So I just wanted to give that update. I should have done it before. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you're not as bad as I am, Rosemary, because Brandy Nunez this entire evening has been excused from tonight's meeting because she's traveling. So sorry, Brandy, you were, you were missed, but not, and almost forgotten to be announced. But we, we look forward to seeing you next meeting. Uh, so I will take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Andy, second, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion carries 400. Thank you and good night.